Okay, we're at 14.5.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is our report on the extension of the proclamation of local homeless emergency, and Kelly Kikekendall will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Corsi, and members of the council. The item before you seeks extension of the proclamation of local homeless emergency. I'll be covering that piece, the brief presentation, and Dave will be providing you some updates on our winter shelter expansion efforts. So, as you know, on August 9th, council formally declared a homeless emergency, declared a homeless shelter crisis, proclaimed a local homeless emergency, and directed the mayor to submit a letter to the governor. California law requires us to renew this emergency every 30 days. That's why we're here this evening. Council has approved the extension of the original proclamation on monthly basis since its original proclamation in August. If approved this evening, this will be the seventh extension. This slide provides an update on recent council actions. On October 11th, the council approved CHAP, the Community Homeless Assistance Program. On January 10th, council approved the Housing First Strategy and the 2016/2000, excuse me, 17 work plan. Also, on January 10th, council directed staff to make amendments to the CHAP guidelines to allow for services on commercial properties and for greater staff involvement in community outreach and engagement and education. Council also directed staff to further evaluate the winter shelter options which were presented to you on January 10th. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Dave.
Thank you, Kelly. So, wanted to just take a moment to update the council on where we're at with your action from a month ago at the January 10th meeting. There were these five preliminary options that we discussed and received direction to explore further. And so, the first one, rapid rehousing funding, that was the request for $125,000 to augment the homeless outreach service team contract for additional resources to place folks directly into housing. That item will be before you next Tuesday, the 14th is a consent item for your consideration. The second option we were asked to look at is expanding the shelter capacity at Samuel Jones Hall. And at the time, we had an opportunity to maybe secure some used portable classrooms from the Santa Rosa School District. We're looking at what's called a free span structure, which is a sturdy tent to place in the parking lot, just to get some additional square footage at the shelter. We learned the next day that the Santa Rosa School District decided to retain three of the four available portable buildings. And so, we put our energy into looking at the free span structure, and with our colleagues in public work, started looking at the viability of a more of a temporary, a permanent temporary building that would provide additional showers, restrooms, and shelter capacity, and that work is underway as well. The National Guard Armory, this was an option we looked at immediately because the facility was available, we just didn't have an operator to fore shelter. So, we did a very quick solicitation of interest from shelter providers in the Sonoma County area. We heard from one, Interface Shelter Network, that expressed an interest to submit a proposal. And then, as the date to submit, the deadline to submit the proposal drew near, we heard from the executive director, who was explaining that, who's also participating in the continuum of care and other discussions, the challenges of shelter operators with the reduction of federal and state emergency shelter grant resources, and shared that perhaps we should look at expanding shelter capacity amongst existing providers. In that message chain, the existing providers were included in that dialogue, but no provider stepped forward to agree with that or to say that, yes, we have the capacity to look at our own shelter operation. And so, that's a long-winded way of saying we did not receive a proposal to activate the armory space. Certainly, if the council wanted us to go back out and seek proposals, cast the net further in the North Bay or around the Bay Area, we can certainly do that. The other option was the Veterans Memorial Building. That is status quo. At the staff level, they're, we're being told that that real estate, that property is not available for the use of a shelter. So, it would take more of a policy discussion around with your colleagues at the Board of Supervisors to determine whether that would be a viable option to continue to pursue. And then, lastly, the former Fire Station 5. We are actively evaluating the American with Disabilities considerations there. That report is due very shortly. Our initial response is that some aspects of the property certainly are not in compliance, but where that work should be done by the end of this week. And so, as staff, there was always the other consideration as well. These were just preliminary options, if you recall, based on the pace by which we were trying to look at expanding what I would say the square footage of our shelter infrastructure. And when I use the word "shelter infrastructure," by that I mean, the city currently has the Homeless Service Center on Morgan Street, where you are, if you are seeking services, you can come in and meet Catholic charities, and you're either then referred out to the Family Support Center, Samuel Jones Hall, and then potentially the winter shelter in the gymnasium portion of Samuel Jones Hall. So, that's the city's current shelter operation system. And so, we began a discussion with Catholic charities, and it was inspired by last week's summit on homeless solutions, where we were hearing a message that perhaps shelters aren't the best model to implement the rapid rehousing. And as your staff, I observe of these options, really one is directly linked with the Housing First model, and that's the resource for rapid rehousing. So, that began a discussion just over the last few weeks about what might be another consideration to help folks get out of the weather, but also be true to the Housing First strategy and have a laser focus with public resource dollars on moving people directly into a house and then providing the supportive services. And so, it emerged from that discussion is the idea of what if we used our existing shelter infrastructure capacity differently by evaluating the staffing model, or how we operate the shelters currently? Perhaps we could create a better caseload management ratio. We could get a housing navigator, for example. We could, you know, build a better relationship with the real estate community with the premise that we might be able to move folks through the shelter system more rapidly into housing and thus create capacity that way. So, that is being explored and discussed as we speak. I just share that because under "other," we're always looking at what might be a way to meet the interest. So, that, I just, just brings you up to speed on what's transpired over the last week or so. The upcoming events, this is a slide we include in these presentations monthly with the extension. The Santa Rosa Homeless Collective is holding a community tomorrow evening. There was a request by council to have an update directly from the collective, and so Jenny Lynn Holmes, who is from Catholic Charities and also a member of the collective, is here to provide that update. And then, because there's a holiday, February 20th, which is the normal scheduled time for the Homeless Policy Subcommittee, we have a special meeting set for next Monday, the 13th, and we'll be building the agenda with the chair. So, with that report, we recommend that the council by resolution approve an extension of the formal proclamation of a homeless emergency. And with that, I can ask Jenny Lynn Holmes to come down and provide a report for the collective.
Let me just ask the council if there are any questions to this point. Anyone? I have just one or two. Was the Interface Shelter Network, was that the former operator of the Armory?
Yes.
So, they do have experience there. They would know what they were getting into.
We would presume so, based on their interest in submitting the proposal, but we never received it.
Okay. And I wasn't sure, when you said that in their response, were you saying that they CC'd on their email some of the other providers in the area?
Yes, to be efficient with the solicitation, because it's been a month. We copied local area shelter providers such as COTS, SAY, Catholic Charities, Interface Shelter Network, Homeless Action, our colleagues at the county. And if they weren't interested in submitting a proposal, we asked if they could reach out to people and firms that they might know to help us out. And so, when they, when Interface Shelter Network replied, it was within that discussion group.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Are you seeing now good?
You were here, oh, it was only 13 hours ago.
It was. We were sitting right here, right?
We told you we were out of time, and I'm sorry, but we're out of time.
Oh.
Just kidding.
Ouch. Well, I'll try to be quick, but just to kind of give a quick update on the Santa Rosa Homeless Collective, we're going to be doing a bigger report out at the Homeless Policy Subcommittee next week, and in that, we're actually going to be specifically targeting one of our, some of our work done in the accountability work group and some of the permanent housing that we've been working on in two different areas. So, I won't go too in-depth in that tonight, because I think the Homeless Policy Subcommittee is going to kind of wrestle with it and then bring it to the, hopefully bring their thoughts to the larger council. But what we did want to kind of focus on was the Summit on Homeless Solutions last week. And first, really want to thank the city for sponsoring it. You're one of our sponsors, and thanks several of you who are actually there. It was quite impressive to see the range of talent that came. I mean, your chief of police is there, your fire chief. We had Director Guin and Guine, and they were also part of the planning efforts. Captain Navarro and Dave were instrumental in a lot of the work. So, I just really appreciate the effort the city made to make that such a fantastic thing. We had over 350 people come from five different counties. So, it was quite exciting to have Santa Rosa be kind of highlighted for the work we're doing and bringing in a local expert, so, or a national expert. So, just to kind of talk quickly about it, I've been to several of Ian's presentations before, so I knew he was going to come here and shake things up. And I think for those of you that attended, I think you all agree that he definitely did that and accomplished it. As a service provider who's been really trying to be housing first, and we've implemented many components of it, we were really excited to learn about how we can kind of take it to the next level and know that we even have things that we need to kind of struggle with and grapple with to really take that next leap into being a true housing-first system. But it's not going to be Catholic Charities alone, right? It's going to take all of us, especially going to take y'all here at the city to kind of, you know, take that leap with all of us as service providers. So, there were five main things that Ian asked us to consider at this. The first was, are the shelters and day services in my community a process or a destination? He asked us to ask ourselves, do we attempt to heal or do we attempt to fix people? Do we try to provide social services or exercise social control? He asked if we believed homelessness can be ended for those who are chronically homeless? And he asked, how do we define success? And those were the questions that kind of laid out the whole summit. And really, it was a conversation about how we move from managing homelessness to solving homelessness and not investing in things that are continuing to maintain people who are experiencing homelessness. And I'm here to say that the answer seems simple, the Housing First concept, you know, give someone a home and then give them the support that they need to keep it. But I know that it's also not going to be easy, right? But he has given us a lot of opportunities on how we can invest locally and, you know, looking at something like the investment we might make in the, you know, the Armory, there are a lot of other opportunities we could also take to really leverage Housing First and do it pretty quickly. He gave us four kind of areas after studying our community a little bit. Dave mentioned a few of them, but it's creating housing-focused shelter. I got a lot of comments, people were saying, whoa, no shelter, no shelter. It's not that there's no shelter, it's that we shouldn't be creating just pop-up shelters here and there that then close and just put people back on the streets in a couple of months, right? It needs to be a housing-focused shelter where it's, that's all you do is work on getting people into housing. It's a process. It's a process by which to get people in housing. He talked about focusing on diversion. Diversion is different than prevention, but he has worked with communities that if they implement diversion properly, 40% of the people who are experiencing homelessness end up never falling into homelessness. And so, what that creates is a lessening of bottlenecks in our shelter waiting list. It creates higher opportunities for people with extreme vulnerabilities to get into shelter, and even locally, we've been studying it. We, Catholic Charities operated a pilot. We served 70 people in the last year, and 94% of those 70 people never even entered the shelter. So, if you look at, that's with one counselor. Imagine if we had several counselors, right? That's a really great way to take a Housing First leap. The next one that Dave also mentioned is housing navigators. By implementing, you know, right now, we have outreach workers and social workers out there looking for housing, but are they really the best people to be out there looking for housing? They're best at building that relationship and building that rapport with people who are in need, but we need to be relying on people who are trained in that area to be able, you know, trained in real estate, trained in being able to talk that language and actually be able to implement getting housing for our community. And the last was mentioning of decreasing our caseloads and, you know, investing in training resources that really allow us to go deeper with the individuals that we serve. We need to look at providing services as a professional thing. We need to make sure that people are trained and have the tools they need to really deal with a lower barrier program and to deal with a higher vulnerable population. So, one thing that's exciting is Ian has agreed to complete, to continue working with us. So, we're not in it alone. He has worked with several communities, and the thing that gave me comfort is he said, you guys have work to do, but you're not that far off. We have a lot of the bones. We just need to add some meat to it, and we need to rearrange pieces of where interventions come. So, that was really encouraging for me to hear and to know that we have somebody who can help us in this transition. The council did pass the Housing First Strategy, which I think he was, he was, thought it was great, and I obviously think it's great. And now, it's how do we really make that decision to stick to being a Housing First program? And how do we stay focused and have a commitment to only investing in things that are in alignment with Housing First? And it's, it's going to be hard, but it's going to really take us being very accountable to the strategy and the philosophy and intervention of being a Housing First city and a Housing First system of care. So, with that, I mean, I was very excited. I've heard really great comments about the summit, and I hope that it helps inform some of the ongoing decisions with related to homelessness in the city council. So, thank you all, and I'm available for questions as always.
Thank you, Jenny Lynn. Questions for Ms. Holmes? Mr. Rogers?
Well, thank you for being here very late. I do really like what I'm hearing on some of these things, the diversion, the housing navigators, some of those ideas. I think that there's been a real frustration from what I've heard on, we've got to do mitigation, but we also have to solve the problem. And was not, I was not able to attend the summit, so a lot of this I'm hearing secondhand from yourself and some of my colleagues about how it, how it went. This might be more of a philosophical question for the council that we'll have to deal with long-term, but in particular, the pop-up shelters criticism from the summit. I'd be interested in hearing my colleagues' thoughts on how do we push past pop-up shelters? And I know that there's the recommendation that we already made about reviewing the Armory, as whether or not that's compatible, or some of the other programs that we're doing is compatible with our overall attempt of ending homelessness and not just doing more mitigation. I know it's been an ongoing conversation, and there's a whole bunch of landmines within that conversation, but just wanted to throw it out there that perhaps tonight is not the time, and perhaps we do need to get through the winter, but long-term, how do we stay committed to the Housing For All proposal, or the Housing First model, and how do we make it more effective? So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Counselor, any questions? Ms. Holmes?
Thank you. And I'm not sure if these are Jenny Lynn or Dave. I've heard a second motel maybe for sale not far from the Palms. Are we looking at that in any way? Is that, is that an alternative SRO option? Anybody else know about that?
We haven't been approached with it yet, but we'd certainly encourage it. The Palms Inn is definitely the most Housing First, it's a local example we have. So, it's a great use of resources because it is resolving homelessness and creating low barrier entry for people, but I don't know if you've heard.
I haven't heard of another hotel in Santa Rosa at this time. We were hearing about one in the Gurnville area, the River area.
The one I'm hearing about is just north of the Palms, but I will check with you later about it. I understand that there's some property adjacent to Sam Jones. Have you been looking into, it may be currently owned by KBBF. Is that being explored for?
So, yes, for the council's benefit, the adjacent parcel next to Samuel Jones Hall that shares the driveway, I call it, to the rear parking lot, is owned by the radio station group, KBBF. They have approached us about ideas to activate their property for, the long-term plan was for housing. The short-term plan is they offered it for additional temporary structures that expand the shelter capacity. We informed them that we're, we first were looking at doing it and the Samuel Jones Hall property. So, that's, that's the status of that discussion.
And, excuse me, for the last one. We talked, I love the direction that we're talking about going with a housing navigator and working with the real estate community. Where are we? There's a, there's something that I tend to think of as an insurance pool. It's sort of a fund so that if apartments are damaged, we have a resource. There's another name for that.
Risk mitigation pool.
Thank you. Risk mitigation pool.
Risk mitigation pool, yes.
I think of it as insurance. Where are we in the status of moving that forward? Because I know as a council, we've mentioned it before.
So, the city manager had asked that that be considered as part of the notice of funding availability the council is currently undertaking for the $3 million to see if there might be an opportunity to use that resource to fund a risk mitigation pool?
As it stands now, the $125 rapid rehousing goes only to rapid rehousing and not to both rapid rehousing and diversion? Is it, is it possible for it to go to, to let the, to go to both rapid rehousing and diversion depending on the needs of the receiving entity?
Jenny Lynn might want to pop in on this too. And so, it's separate, and the way I'm crafting the amendment that will come to you next week for that piece is there's existing money in the budget, in the contract for housing assistance, which covers a broad range of things, which could provincially be the diversion, not prevention. The $125,000 is going to be specific for rapid rehousing.
They are different programs, and they're both instrumental in, in part of the Housing First Strategy.
I just happen to know that you are now out of diversion funds. Because I sent someone to get some, and there weren't any.
Yes.
So, that is a concern.
And we're out of rapid rehousing too, so, yeah.
Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Holmes, how does the CHAP program and the Samuel Jones Shelter fit into our Housing First Strategy? I know there are parts that do and don't. Does one not completely? Does one play a part? But do we want to, is it being recommended or considering to not recommend spending certain monies for an expansion of the Sam Jones Shelter? And how, just give me a sense of what's coming out of the recommendations from the summit.
So, Sam Jones Hall, as it is in its regular, is a, it is a trying-to-be-housing-focused shelter. But as we mentioned earlier, there are caseload issues. There's 138 people there. We only have two case managers. You're supposed to be a 1 to 20. It's more like a 1 to 65 case ratio. So, you know, there's, there's capacity issues there, but it is, the intention is, you know, we've, we've lowered the barriers of Sam Jones. We have done a lot of things to become a housing-focused shelter. There's additional, you know, increases in fulfilling capacity that would allow us to even get further along those lines to be a true Housing First program. The CHAP program, as was kind of discussed by Ian, would not necessarily be something that is in alignment with Housing First, but that's, you know, not necessarily CHAP overall, but something like the winter shelter. He was very clear at the summit and said, you know, that is not in alignment with Housing First. It is not necessarily a housing-focused shelter, right? And that's really what he says. If you're going to expand capacity, expand capacity in a housing-focused system, not just a putting somewhere overnight and not having the case management and support systems to get them to the housing opportunity at the end.
So, in that conversation about housing-focused, would it be in a perfect world? Or if we were to decide to make a change in how we were expending our funds, would it be more valuable to take monies that would be going into expanding a shelter that does not have the staffing to help move people out? Or should we leave a shelter the size that it is and try to build up our individual service providers that will help, that will have those conversations with those that are in the shelter and get them out of that situation?
Yes, it would be, for the same amount of money as it would be to potentially operate, let me just use the Armory as an example, for one month, you could hire a full-time person that could take care of it for a year. So, it's, it's, it's a cost efficiency, and the recommendation is that we start going deeper with the people we are serving, and we start creating a better, better system out of homelessness and focusing on that, focusing on increasing, decreasing the caseloads and increasing the placements to housing. The rapid rehousing item that's come before you is a perfect example of creating more resources to be able to do that. So, it would be in the opinion of what came out of the summit, that it would be a better solution to invest in a long-term strategy rather than a short-term interim and costly strategy.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Mr. Schwedder?
Thanks. If you could just clarify, I heard you say the opinions that came out of the summit, but it's based on research and facts, right? So, for those that weren't at the summit, it's not just one person's opinion. It's based on research, and this is what the data shows is an effective methodology for any homelessness.
Yes.
Okay. And could you touch a little bit more on Housing First, the philosophy versus the intervention? Because I know what I heard, but I'd like to hear what your take on that, the philosophy of Housing First versus actually the intervention of Housing First.
Yes, so, that's a big question. I think Ian spent a couple of hours on that, right? But, and there will be a video coming out, so if y'all are like, oh, I'm really missing, I can't wait to see it again, we'll have a video for it all. But, you know, Housing First is a philosophy, but it's also an intervention. And so, when we say we're, we're following a Housing First philosophy or approach, that's really saying that we are investing in the most vulnerable in our community, making sure that they are prioritized, and making sure that our whole system of care screens in rather than screens out in a well-coordinated, data-informed way. That's the philosophy. Now, the interventions are the specific things like rapid rehousing, housing-focused shelters, coordinated entry, housing navigators. Those are the pieces of the intervention that really allows us to do the work. And where I think, and I can only speak for where we've been working in, is we have been operating at a Housing First philosophy level, and now we want to really get the intervention pieces a lot stronger. And it is so hard to not go down, you know, some of the other areas that sometimes seem like easy, quick fixes, and to stay focused on those long-term things. And I'll say that as a service provider, it's very difficult, and I think we all struggle with those decisions, but we can do a little for a lot, or a lot for a little, and really get those people out of homelessness, and then start really digging our way out of, create the totality of the people that are homeless in Sonoma County and Santa Rosa right now.
So, I think I heard, and my personal belief is we should go for the quality versus the quantity.
Yeah.
So, what, as far as metrics, if we were to find funding or establish, or get some housing locators attached to the host team, what type of metrics, what difference would that do with what we are experiencing now?
Yeah. So, it would be huge on a variety of different things, but there are three measures that Ian says people should be measuring. One is, how quickly are you getting out of shelter? How long are you staying in housing? And are you, you know, repeating into, back into homelessness? So, those would be the measurements we would take. Right now, we have a baseline of what it's like, you know, placing people without a housing navigator, but having a housing navigator, we'd be able to see the increases go up. And I'll just use, for example, we have employed this housing navigator strategy as a pilot with our Sonoma Works contract with the County of Sonoma, and we're seeing as many as seven people being housed a day with a housing navigator. So, because we aren't having, we aren't asking our social workers who are trained in the counseling and the care provision to be out there and try to speak real estate as well. We need to make sure that we're relying on the, you know, the professionals in that area to be our advocates and to go and make those connections with people who are in that world, and they can help speak for our more vulnerable population. And the host team is working with the most chronically homeless of our population, and seeing those people off of the streets would be seeing significant, significant impact in our fire services, our police services, our downtown businesses. It would just have a ripple effect in so many different ways.
And so, you also mentioned the staffing ratio out at Sam Jones Hall. What is the best-case scenario or best practices? So, if you're going to start from scratch, what's that situation to have great quality of service with the case management at Sam Jones Hall?
It's a 1 to 20 for shelter. It's a 1 to 15 for permanent support of housing with something like the Palms Inn, and it's a 1 to 25 ratio for a rapid rehousing intervention.
And where are we at now?
At Sam Jones, we're at a 1 to 65.
Okay. And also for about the... And also for about the diversion, which sounds like, where are we at with diversion? Diversion officer or diversion staff?
So currently, we have one counselor for diversion. It's the pilot funding through the County of Sonoma. We attach it to our coordinated entry program, so when someone comes to us and is not literally homeless yet, we automatically give them a referral to our diversion counselor. That diversion counselor can only take up a caseload of about 30 at any given moment. So as she gets people diverted out of shelter, she then picks up another person. But, and so there's a bottleneck there as well, because we only have one counselor for all of the hundreds of people who are in need. And Councilmember Combs is exactly right. She called me desperate last week, and we tried everything we could, and there's just a lack of actual services and resources in those areas.
In all of the areas of the homeless field about prevention, isn't there only one predictor of someone's likelihood of becoming homeless as if they were homeless before? Which again, the diversion would just, to me, that just seems like we ought to be emphasizing that if they never enter the system, that's the greatest indicator, or would be the opposite of the greatest indicator of becoming homeless.
Yes.
Correct. Great. I think that's it for right now. There'll be more questions for you, yeah.
Mr. Schwedhelm?
Quick question before I start. Jenny Lynn, thanks for being here. Can you explain what, where the bottleneck was in the case of Ms. Combs' friend or associate that she was trying to help? Was it, was it a problem with not having the capacity to do diversion? Was it not having enough availability of housing to place this person?
No, we had, the person was, you know, this is a common call we get. It was a person who was behind on rent and needed to have some back rent paid in order to get them caught up. And so our diversion counselor, when she receives a referral, she immediately uses an evidence-based tool to do the diversion triage, right? And she checked, we go into everything into like, what are your family support systems? Where, you know, what are your friends' support systems? Like, so that we can either get him with a family member or a friend or something like that, or in this case, keep them housed by not allowing the eviction to happen. In this scenario, the difficulty was that we were out of diversion funds, so we couldn't pay the money to be able to, you know, afford the, it was about $300 that the individual needed. And the other problem was that this person, we wasn't sure about documentation. And so for another agency that requires that, they were not eligible. And so we would have been the only program that, because we don't check that part in our funding circles. And so that was a big reason why we couldn't get this person.
So, so in this individual's case, it was kind of a need for more funding to help pay that back rent?
Yeah. But now we continue to work with their, and luckily, this individual has a family support system and a friend's support system. Councilmember Combs has been an advocate for her, and that's what we do. Some of it, sometimes it's giving them the funding. Sometimes it's connecting them with an advocate. Not everyone has somebody that can make these calls on their behalf, and so we do that oftentimes for them.
Oh, so that, so you're able to successfully divert this individual to family members?
Well, no, that's an example. Right now, they have Councilmember Combs who's kind of filling that void. And so we find a Councilmember Combs who, in their life, that allows them to continue to stay out of the shelter system as long as possible. And successfully, so far, the person has not come into the shelter program.
Well, that's great. But I also want to say, before I had the opportunity to sit up here, I spent a lot of time in the audience as an advocate, and I would push initiatives like Code Drives, Tiny Houses was one I was really involved with, and a lot of others. And I've been doing that for four or five years now, since I've been a sophomore in college. And, you know, it's, it's kind of seems to me that what we've been doing over the last five years has really been just a lot of triaging and a lot of continual management. And I think we've done a good job of kind of managing the problem, but we aren't making those advances to solve the problem. So when I watched Ian's performance or his speech on Monday, I kind of looked, looked at my own work and started to question it and think, gosh, I think it is time for us to take a new tack. And now that I have the privilege of sitting here, and as I learned to understand the impacts of our demands on staff, it kind of makes sense to me that we haven't been able to get closer to a solution and we've been in management gear. So, you know, going forward, I would certainly support us looking into just, just trying and overhaul on the system and taking a whole new tack entirely. And then we evaluated over the course of a couple of years, was it more successful? Was it less successful? And, because part of this is a big experiment, so I just wanted to partly answer Councilmember Rogers' question and voice my opinion.
I've got a few cards. Are there any questions, other questions right now? Mr. Rogers first, and then Mr. Schwedhelm.
I just wanted, quickly, with the categorization, if we were to sort of talk a little bit more about what we're doing, which is less pop-up shelters and more diversion and those, would it be fair to say that we might see a temporary increase in homeless with the trade-off being long-term solutions that actually solve the problem?
I think if we, if we maintain what we have right now, and we don't invest in additional, we, we should theoretically see similar. But you will start seeing a decrease if we're doing it right. If we're starting to actually get people off the streets for longer periods of times and into actual housing interventions, we will see the decrease. I'm not saying defund anything necessarily that we're doing right now, because we still need to make that shift. And I think Ian kind of, he likened it to a big, what is it, an oil tanker? Like, it moves, but it moves a little slower, right? And so we, we are going to need to continue to invest what we're doing right now as we make the shift. But any future investment should be in a way that is starting to make that reduction overall.
Ms. Holmes, since Ian's name has been invoked multiple times today, would you let the people who are here who don't know who he is, would you explain?
Love to.
Give his, give his full name, and you don't have to give his whole resume.
Oh, okay.
Let's say who he is.
Ian DeJonge, thank you for that. I apologize. He is the internationally recognized expert on ending homelessness. He's the president of Org Code Consulting and is a consultant to HUD, the VA and Department of Health and Human Services with his work on, on homelessness. And so to have him here in our community looking at what we're doing is a huge opportunity for us, because he's also representing at a national level and advising.
Thank you. That's, that's sufficient. Mr. Schwedhelm?
Thank you. Just one other question. You mentioned training briefly, and I think that maybe one would also support this. And what's stuck in my mind is motivational interviewing technique, but that's not what it is. But I had known Mr. DeJonge had mentioned something about some additional training for outreach workers that is some sort of methodology that's, that's a science-based.
Yeah. Assertive engagement is an evidence-based training model that he recommends for street outreach workers, especially with a population like ours that has a heavy chronically homeless. It's a little bit stronger in its intervention with people who are very resistant to services, or could be labeled as that. I know there's differences of opinions on that, but it helps, it's shown to take that harder-to-serve population and get them into services quicker. Another one he talks about is recovery-oriented counseling, which is an intervention that comes after housing as well as critical time intervention. So those are the ones that he really recommends for communities to invest in.
So with that first one that you mentioned for the street outreach workers, is that a one-day session, two-day session?
I believe it's a two-day session. And Ian, Ian's organization puts those trainings on, they're certified to do it.
So it could happen fairly rapidly if the instruction was available? All right, thank you.